City City Council Meeting to Order. It's Monday, May 8th, 2017, 6:01 PM. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comments section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed in our public hearing and public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hitten.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Wolke is excused and Kip Ward.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Voice change going on here. All right, consent agenda. Minutes of work session meeting for April 17th, 2017.
I make the motion we accept the minutes?
Second.
Motion to second to approve minutes. Discussion. Any none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others. As a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and sign up to speak. The sheet is coming up as we speak. So just tell people if you've never been here before, you can choose either seat. Just pull the microphone up to you so we can all hear you nice and clear and just give us your name. We don't need your address. Thank you very much. And first up, David Elton.
Do I need to give my address?
No, sir. Just your name.
Okay, my name is David Elton. And is it three minutes or five minutes?
Oh yeah, three. Three. Five. Thank you.
Pardon the video right here. Makes it easier for me. As you know, last year and the year before, I myself and my family donate to the Warming Shelter and I was, I've traded some emails and communications with the Chief of Police Keith Killian who serves on the board that I used to serve on, which is the Warming Shelter and Homeless Solutions. I'm looking for feedback from the city. I'm looking into the fact that Shiloh, the gathering place, is local and fairly new, 501(c)(3). Contiguous and right next door to that is a property that would be perfect for a turnaround center, which is to say, people can come for food at Shiloh, but next door where it used to be Reconnections, there is space down there, quite, quite a bit, about 2,000, I think, square feet, which could be a place for showers. Now, I know that there's a potential for a public-private partnership, but that is something that we're looking into. As you know, last year and the last two years, thanks to your guidance, Mayor Williams, the Warming Shelter has been very productive. So that $6,000, what we've donated, that we've, we've said on the record that we'll double it. And we're now looking into the fact that we think there's a great opportunity for a partnership between the city and Shiloh Gathering and our family to look into that. So if we can look into that over the next few months, I would, I would appreciate it. And I've been talking with Martha Watts, Lory Arce Terez, Chief Killian, now I'm speaking to you, and hoping that we can discuss this. I know there's been some controversy on the council over this and that issue. I'm not here to talk about that at all. So if there's any, first of all, who is the first person I should speak to with regard to that? If a private entity wants to come in and propose a financial donation with a couple of boundaries?
I think I'd always start with Mr. Chandler and he can give you the right direction from there. Okay?
I'll do that. Does anybody on the, have any questions?
Not right now.
Welcome to the City Council, Mr. Hoagland. My favorite liberal. I'm a conservative myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Rodriguez. Oh wait, were you, okay, you're on I-4. That's coming up, yeah? That's public hearing, so hold on to that, I'm sorry. Ron Krieger and Caprice Davis. Public hearing, okay, didn't say that there. Okay. And same with Monica? Same thing on the citizen, the public comment side or just general? Come on up. You're on the present, oh, you're on the present, okay. It is okay. It's, you know, there's no penalty for doing that. All right, then, anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak. Seeing none, we move on. Presentation. Where did you want to move the other one? J is after this?
Wanted to move item number J.
J.
Up to behind item F. Just behind this presentation coming up.
So after. Yes. Okay. Behind and after. All right. So we have a presentation from Civic West Ambulance, please. Your turn. We don't stand on a lot of formality here. We'll get through it. We'll get through it. One way or the other.
Hi. I'm Monica Valencia here on behalf of Pacific West Ambulance, marketing-
Monica, you have a soft voice, so pull that in a little tighter, would you? You can just drag the microphone. You don't even have to lean. Pull that in there. There you go.
Am I good? Oh.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Monica Valencia and I'm here with Pacific West Ambulance. And with me I have Greg Keat, who has been part of Pacific West Ambulance as a paramedic for-
How many years?
Nineteen.
Nineteen years. And he has a few words and I have a plaque that we'd like to present you with.
I'd like to thank you all for your time today. Just want to give kind of a brief overview of what Emergency Medical Services is. Every year there is a big national push to try to bring information to folks to alert them to the EMS services that they get through 911. A lot of people are kind of unaware of all the stuff going through the background. So as an EMT, which is the second step of emergency services, you go through school for six months at like a community college, like Oregon Coast Community College. They have a program that they run once a year. So it's two terms. The fire departments, they have something called an EMR. That's about a six-week class. So you're kind of almost doubling up when you increase each level. There's also a level called an Advanced EMT. That's an additional term to two terms depending on which school you go to. At a paramedic, the state of Oregon, in their wisdom, decided to bring the professionalism up. So you're required to have an associate's degree minimum. There are bachelor's degree programs offered through Oregon Health Sciences University as well. I chose this kind of as a mistake. I was going to be a physical therapist until I found out what a physical therapist did and how much they get to hurt people's knees and elbows and shoulders and all that good rehab that's totally needed, but I didn't want to be that guy. So I fell into emergency medicine and have been very happy. Everybody asks me, what's your worst call? What's your best call? There's so many of them, you know, after a while you try to just be able to sleep at night. You know, it's people's worst day when they're calling you usually. You know, sometimes they call you for the stubbed toe and they just don't have a car to get to the emergency room. But, you know, it's all good stuff. So Pacific West has been very good to me and my family. We've been here over 18 years. Moved here from the Salem, Oregon area. So native Oregonian. Some people call us snobs. That's fine, too. Very happy to be here. Became a critical care transport paramedic. So people having strokes, other specialty needs that happen, I'm the guy who gets to go on those calls. So the more critical, I'm lucky enough to be there. And if there are any questions about EMS or just silly calls or anything else, I'm happy to answer anything you have for me.
I do have a question and maybe, I don't know if you can answer it or not. What's the job outlook like if we wanted to encourage some of our high schoolers to look into this?
You know, anything related to people is always going to be an in-demand job.
Is that included in this area?
So, including this area because you have to look at, you know, the aging population, the baby boomers, you know. We're all going to be there. We're all going to need help. There's a critical shortage in primary care doctors. There's also a shortage in EMS. You know, a lot of times people think of this as a young person's game because you'll do it and then you'll move on to a different job. You find you like something better, you know. Maybe you use it as a stepping stone to being a nurse, physician's assistant. Some people even go on to become emergency room physicians and those have been people that have actually worked for our company. And, you know, they're great resources for as long as we can keep them, but if people are only here a year, two years, five years, that's a lot of people to have to keep turning over because we run a good number of calls and it's a good smattering of calls as well. So not only people having heart attacks, sometimes, you know, people get shot. Sometimes people get stabbed. Sometimes people just have a nice average ordinary appendicitis attack or sciatica nerve killing them. So this, this field, the whole healthcare industry, will just continue to grow and grow and grow.
Right. Good to know.
And to add on to that, to help with the cost for those emergency ambulance transports, our Lifeguard enrollment is started May 1st. It ends on June 30th. We do not prorate. If a purchase, if a person purchases this membership program after that, you'll get from that day forward until June 30th of 2018 and so on, year after year. So enrollment's now. And Lifeguard is just a waived ambulance transport. So it's $59. It covers you, covers your mom, your children, anybody in your household that is under your taxes. And I do want to announce and mention that this isn't like a big sales push. There's no commissions behind it. This is just a membership program that we offered to our community to waive those costs because they are so expensive. And we also waive those transfers over to the next, or to a higher level of care facility, say like Corvallis or OHSU, Salem. And so it's just an awesome membership. I'll be, I was selling it when I wasn't there and I will continue to promote this membership. And then on another note, we want to present the city of Lincoln City with a plaque for your continued support.
Please.
And that's, that's it. That's all we have for you.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Mayor, could you just take a moment and share with us what it is that the city does or doesn't do that impacts your work?
That can be so wide-ranging. It can be everything from we're making improvements to the Cutler City area or potentially, you know, different things. The breakdown in communication sometimes can be life-threatening. If we don't know a road's closed, to be able to go around it. The city actually supports a lot of other programs, you know, whether it be assisting with folks that are homeless, whether it be anything with the hospital because we work so well together with the hospital. We do training with each other. So there's many things that the city does that, you know, the general population, I think, doesn't have an idea of how important it is to actually be here. We actually function through the Board of Commissioners for the county. The county is the one who actually awards ambulance service contracts. That handles the 911 calls. So if anyone on this council wanted to approach anyone on the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to say, yes, they have done good service, or no, they've done bad service and we think you guys need to, you know, decide what you want to do, or if this is a good company or a bad company, that's what the city's able to do and to help facilitate a lot of what happens with our ambulance because it's just like anyplace else. It is kind of an at-will job, you know. The county decides at any time. You folks decide to mount something to go to the county with, you know, we could all be out of jobs, you know. There's roughly 70, 80 people with Pacific West Ambulance currently. So the city does a lot and we're thankful for it.
Encourage those kids.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, I do.
Yeah. Would you need them?
Do you?
What?
Encourage the kids? Do you get out to school?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we've actually been to the high schools and done several presentations.
We do a lot of different programs together we have in the past.
Any luck? Have you had any-
I present it wide enough, not so much that they will want to come necessarily to EMS, but I approach them in saying, you know, whatever you choose to do, however positive that is, be there. Choose this. It will let you know if you want to do something in this field. Because we currently work 24-hour shifts and that's not for everybody.
Keep strong minds.
You know, we're looking at going to 12-hour shifts, you know, as soon as we get staffing levels up. And for some people with families, that's all they can, you know, manage, is 12 hours away at a time because it is very difficult with childcare, especially on 24-hour ambulance, to get somebody to watch your child for 24 hours.
What would that staffing level be? How many more do you need?
Oh, well, you know, it's kind of an ongoing, like he was saying, that when some folks come in, they find that they are going into the hospitals. So there is always going to be an encouragement for, for youth, for anyone to come and apply and be a part of the EMS world. There's always a need for it continuously.
Ballpark around 10 more, 10 more people total. And that's in combination of EMTs and paramedics to be able to go to the 12-hour shifts ballpark.
Right.
As long as everyone else stays and no one runs away to any other jobs. And that's, you know, the drawback sometimes as well is people find other jobs. They decide that Lincoln City or Lincoln County isn't their cup of tea and they'll go elsewhere. So we're trying to find little ways within our organization to-
That is a good point.
To find the right people, to bring the right people here, to grow the right people here. Because there are several people that have actually grown up in Lincoln County and are very productive members of our organization. And a lot of times they are the ones with the contacts. It's their friends. It's their relatives. And they're able to say, yes, good or bad or indifferent.
Right. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. What is your service area?
Good question.
All right. We run all the way from the top of Cascade Head, which is the Tillamook County line. We go out to Highway 18 mile post 15, which is a little bit beyond the county line. County line's actually about 10.5, just a little bit past Vanduser, but that's Tillamook County. There's no access of roads there. So we have an agreement with Tillamook County's EMS provider that we will go out to there. Heading south, all the way through Depot Bay, all the way through Newport, out Highway 20 to the county line, which is about mile post 34. Back in May of this year, we were awarded the contract for the Waldport ASA. I believe that's ASA 4. And that goes and meets up right up against Yahats. And Yahats has their own ambulance still. And if they get busy, we provide services for them. And, you know, other places will provide services to us if we need to, something called mutual aid. If we're busy and we're down low on ambulances, we will have an additional ambulance come in from, say, a different area. So that's why sometimes people will see an ambulance from Tillamook County down here running a 911 call. It's just because the volume is so big. We plan for meeting all of our needs, but you know, when five calls drop at one time in Lincoln City, all five of your ambulances are busy.
Wow. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Are you guys prepared for August 21st?
I knew that was going to be the, I knew that was going to be the next question.
I'm looking for sunglasses right now.
So we are prepared. We're going to get even more prepared as we go. We've been a part of the Emergency Preparedness Program for, throughout the county with Jenny Damaris. So we're right on cue for that. And we are going to have as many hands on deck as we can. So we'll be there. As far as I know, there might be clinics that kind of held up, held up at each, at each smaller clinic throughout the county, so.
Samaritan Health Systems is looking at doing different things as well. So yeah, we'll, we'll tie in and work with all of our emergency responders, whether that's police, whether it's fire departments, whether it's the local hospital. But yeah, we are bringing on extra people. We are not allowing any vacations during that time. So yeah, as many ambulances as we, as we have. And we are going to try to call from some of our sister companies, which is a benefit of us is we have three other sister companies. One's up in Washington County, another one's up in the Seaside Astoria area, and then the last one is down in Bay Cities Coos Bay area. So everybody's going to be busy, obviously. But yes, we're going to do everything we can to bring as many extra resources as available. And if that means a push cart, we're going to use a push cart. If it means we can drive an ambulance, we're going to drive an ambulance.
Mr. Mayor?
Anything else?
How do your services coordinate with the fire department?
Great question. The fire department is an intricate resource with us. They provide services for the initial scene stuff if we're not there first. Sometimes they get there first. Also, if it's a water rescue, they have a great water rescue team. They do stuff with cutting people out of cars for bad accidents like happened on the Fourth of July last year or the year before that made so much press. So they have EMTs, a couple of paramedics as well. So we really tie in well. So if they're there doing all their stuff, because we, you can see my uniform. I don't have turnouts. I don't have helmets. I don't have extra gloves to be able to go in there and do too much as far as getting the patient out of a vehicle that's all mangled around them. So we'll let them do their part. They'll do an initial assessment and then through their instinct command, they will tell us, hey, this is what we got. This is what we want to do. Is that the game plan? Because the paramedics ultimately on the ambulance are responsible for the transport of the patient. So even though it may take half hour, hour to get them out of the vehicle, we may be working and giving them hints, hey, if you guys can get in there and start an IV. Hey, if you guys can just reposition the head to make sure they keep breathing, you know. We all, we all try to play well together as much as we can and let the politics be the politics of someone higher than us. Streetwise, we work great together.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. And you have a plaque for us?
I do.
All right. All right. And it says- "Pacific West Ambulance recognizing the city of Lincoln City for its continued support of emergency medical services personnel in the city of Lincoln City. National EMS Week, May 21st through 27th, 2017. Always strong, always in service." I'll make sure Ron gets this and posts it appropriately. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. I've been a beneficiary of your service and very professional. Thank you. All right. And do I need a motion or just, I'm going to say, okay. We had a request to move J to now, the selection of the architectural group for construction of the police building. Any objection?
Isn't a lot of the people here for the public hearing?
Well, we, we had the request that these folks didn't have to sit through the public hearing for, this isn't the public hearing for the, for the police building. It's a public hearing for something else. But we're just trying to be conscious of their time to release them.
The people wanting to speak on the 36th street.
I'm, I'm asking to move J, the selection of the architectural group, to now, ahead of the public hearing.
Right.
So if they can do theirs and then go home, then we can spend the rest of the time in public hearing.
Guess someone would have to make a motion, right?
Pretty much.
Actually, if it's unanimous consent, you don't need a motion. If it's not going to be unanimous, then you don't need a motion.
Well, I'm for yes, 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 yes. Your call.
Well, then I'll say no.
I'd make a motion to move item J in the agenda up to now.
Second. Motion to second. Discussion. Any none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. So, selection of architectural group for construction of police building.
They are coming up. Mr. Mayor, I'll just start this and then turn the time over to our police chief. We are very excited to present this architectural firm before you today. We interviewed three outstanding firms. It was, for me, a very fun day in discussing all of their different ideas and the expertise they bring to this. We are recommending FFA Architecture to you. The next step, and I'll let the chief do all the details, but the next step in this process would be for you to give us the go-ahead to go forward and begin preparing the contracts for this firm. So with that, I'll turn the time over to the chief to take it from here.
So the process for Architect was send out a request for proposal based upon qualifications. We received, I think, 34 inquiries as far as getting copies of the RFP, which were sent out. And at the end of the day, there were three proposers, or three responses based on those RFPs. So we reviewed their proposals. FFA Architect was one of the three. The other two were Skylab and the, and McKenzie were the three groups. So we graded their, basically evaluated their written RFP proposal. And then we had the interview process, which was very enjoyable. We learned a lot. I think we learned more from them than they learned about us. But it was a very interactive discussion, more so than a, here's a presentation, what questions do you have? It was a very interactive dialogue and stuff. And what we got out of that experience was the experience that FFA and their partnering with Jim McLaren of MWL Architect out of Phoenix. He's designed over 300 crime labs and police buildings in total and stuff. So that was a very unique partnership that we are excited to bring them forward. Their style kind of fits with ours as far as the interactive type process. They recognize the public engagement piece, particularly with the city council, as we're here tonight, beginning that process. And so all in all, at the end of the day, we decided to go with FFA. This is Troy Ainsworth and Ian Gilbert will be the leads on this project. They've got maybe two or three quick slides. Then we'll be asking your permission to negotiate a contract with them, too. That'll be the first step in this whole process of the designing of the police building.
And just a quick question, chief. You were saying we negotiate the contract. Who is we?
We, the city staff.
Okay.
And then to negotiate a contract.
Then we bring it to you.
For your approval.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Troy Ainsworth. I'm a principal with FFA Architecture and Interiors from Portland. Really happy to be here. Thank you for your time. We will keep it brief as I know you have a full agenda. Wanted to give you very quick background on FFA. The firm was founded in 1956 in Portland by Bill Fletcher. It's been known very well throughout the region for northwest-focused, community-focused, context-sensitive design. This is a project we, we did in Astoria, the Americana CM. So we've been fortunate enough to partner with Jim McLaren out of Phoenix. We reached out to Jim after having conversations with other police professionals in the region. And we're pointing his direction and we thought that he brought a really fantastic national perspective to what it takes to do a public safety building. And we thought that that was warranted here. So we were asked some questions. As part of our interview, we had our, our discussions the chief mentioned was wide-ranging. But there were several questions that the selection committee had asked us in advance, so we wanted to make sure that we addressed. And the first one was, what is the design team's vision for the project? And we turned this around a little bit in that we said we really want to make sure that the vision for the project is, is yours, the city of, of Lincoln City's vision. And that we will help the city, the group that we're working with, the community, come to the answers for this project that it really deserves. That's really, we, what we feel our role is, is to help, help guide the process and come to solutions that, that fit the community, fit the needs of the police and the different users of the building. The next question we had was, what is our vision for how the design team will interact with city staff? Should we advance on Troy? Thank you. So I think there's a perception about architects that we spend all night drawing and drafting tables. There's a lamp and that's what we do. And there's a pile of rolled up balls of paper that we've done sketches for. And then all of a sudden we come up and we show you our design and we sit down and wait for your applause. That's not really how we operate anymore. We are really more facilitators of a process that helps you develop the facility that's most appropriate for you. And so we use this image up here to describe what we do. This is more what we do. The conductor in the middle of the room taking a lot of different voices aiming for a singular vision at the end of the day that best fits you. We love this image because, you know, analogy here is that the conductor is making this really amazing wonderful music, but he's the one person in that picture who's not making a sound.
Interrupt just one sec because we have pretty specific mics. Is each time you turn the-
Fall away. I apologize.
So feel free to pull that up close.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So the big picture is, is that we're here to facilitate a process with you to make sure that the end result is something that is worthy of being here in Lincoln City. So, and then the last question was- So, and then the last question was tell us about your knowledge of police facility design, sorry.
It moves.
It moves, so just follow it with me. There you go. And how it informs your design process. And I think the thing that both we brought in our own experience regionally, as well as what Jim McLaren brought nationally, is that every facility is different. Every type of facility is different, every leadership type is different, everyone is looking for a different set of priorities relative to a police station. So you can't take, for lack of a better term, a cookie cutter approach to designing a facility. You can't just take national standards and say, that's going to work here. You really have to spend the time to interact with people, interview people, talk with them, to find out what fits. If Jim was here, he'd use this quote that he shared with us, and we're now going to use it every time we interview. But it's basically the notion that we don't come in and ask you what you want, we come in and ask you what you do. There's a big difference between those two things. So, any questions for us?
Hi.
Hello.
I think this is a pretty happy day for that guy sitting behind you. I've been thinking about this quite a bit, and I took a tour of the existing police building, and I'm sure you've been through it and see the, have you?
We haven't had a chance to go through it yet.
You haven't?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then I'll save that question for later. I have a few questions. One is about lead certification. I noticed on your website that you, that you've done a number of those type of buildings, and I'd be interested in that, but I'd also like to know at what level you would think about that, and when the return on that investment would be, in number of years?
Sure.
And...
Well, we did have a fairly involved discussion about sustainable design when we had our interview with the team that was interviewing, so it was a very healthy and involved discussion. We typically tailor the sustainable design approach to each project and what the goals are. So it is a project-by-project approach, and some of our projects have been certified and a number of them have not, but we always think in that mindset. Our firm is a signatory to the 2030, you know, environmental, what's the name of that program exactly? The AIA 2030 Challenge. And so we're always thinking about it. So I think that it would be something that we would work with the core team from the city to determine what, what level of recognition was required. Irregardless of that, we always incorporate sustainable design approaches, especially on buildings such as this, which will be here for probably several generations, and have to be an essential facility. I'd say that there's, there's different aspects of sustainability. There's a notion of being sustainable, to be sustainable, and there's also the certification aspect of it. And I think the certification exists to basically hold all of our feet to the fire. If we say we're going to aim for this commitment, then that certification, that plaque at the end, that's what keeps everybody focused on that task. We look at it both from good design, which is what you do, we also look at it from an efficiency standpoint. If we can make the building more efficient, we can help his operating budget at the end of the day. And then lastly, the certification aspect is, it's not gravy per se, but it, it's helpful. So we're, actually, we're doing right now, just wrapping up, the first LEED version four project in the state of Idaho, which is for a small library that we're doing, that Troy and actually, and I are actually going out to see on Friday. So relative to a payback tied to certification, it doesn't really work that way, because there's so many different factors relative to certification that comes in terms of payback. It's usually more things that are more targeted, like efficiency of the envelope, or the amount of photovoltaics you put on the roof. Those are more direct calculations that you can find. The example of the photo that we had up there for Jim McLaren's office, that is the first net zero police station in the country, and he said the payback on that was like four years or something. If I remember correctly.
Was that four or four?
Show that picture, show where the photovoltaic panels are.
Right, so that whole canopy that's out front there, that has all photovoltaics on it, as well, I believe, as the roof itself. So essentially, the property generates more electricity than it uses over the course of the year.
Is that one in Arizona?
No, it's in Salt Lake. It's like, still much warmer, clearer climate.
I was going to say, you need, we'd need bigger solar panels here.
Few more. But I think quality, I think your question has to do with efficiency and quality and long-term benefit, and those are always at the top of our mind when working on a facility such as this.
Okay, so I think my second question, you've probably already answered. I'm also curious about solar roof tiles and wind turbines, and it sounds like you have experience with that.
Yeah, I, not so much wind turbines personally.
We have a lot of wind here. We should take advantage of the wind.
Yeah, I actually live out in Corbett, out in the gorge, and I'm convinced I should have wind someplace on my property, but... Those are all things that we should keep in mind when we're looking at the initial options.
Okay. I'm also curious about the, the police buildings that you designed in Eugene. Do you have any pictures of those?
We didn't have any projects in Eugene. I've worked on, which one? You may have been thinking of the facility we did in Lebanon, Oregon?
Maybe.
What was your question about it?
No, I, I thought it was your website, maybe it was your partner Jim's?
It may have been.
Okay. So my next question, and then I'll be quiet for a minute, is how does your partnership with Jim work? If he's in Arizona and you're here, and our building is here, or you're in Portland and our building will be here, how does all that come together?
Sure. So we're your regular day-to-day contact throughout the course of the project, and we will be here when you need us to be here. Jim, we will leverage his expertise. So early in programming, which is when we're working with the chief and his staff to, and you as a community, to understand what the arrangement, what the size and scale and scope of the spaces are, he will be here and work closely with us as part of that. In addition, his expertise in the nuts and bolts of how the police station goes together, he'll be a part of sort of QA and QC, basically, for the project throughout. And then when we do follow-up at the end of the process, when we do sort of the final walkthrough, we'll probably have him be a part of that, as well as the one-year follow-up when we come back and do post-documentary surveys, he'll probably be a part of that as well. The other thing I wanted to just clarify is that FFA is the lead consultant, so we'll be signing the contract. I will be the architect of record for the project. Ian will be our primary point of contact. So we are, FFA is responsible for the project, and of course, we're, we've worked regionally and doing a project here with us in Portland is, is something we do quite often. So that distance is typically not a problem unless there's a major winter storm or something happening. So I think we, that's how we're organized, with the basic management of the, of the project.
One more question? Okay, my one more question is, so at what point, I know you do design, but at what point do you step away from the project? Is that at construction, or do you follow, well, you said walkthrough, so you follow it through to the end?
Yes, we're, we're involved from the beginning through the end. We include in our services is what's called construction administration. So when we're, we're done with the design and the contractor's brought on board, then we do kind of step back, because the contractor takes the lead on the site and starts to build the project. We then are in a kind of a response and assist mode, answering questions, reviewing submittals, coming to the site at certain intervals to ourselves and our consultants to assure progress is being made and everything's being done correctly. And then we help close out the project, making sure everything is done properly. We document, do the punch list, all of that, to make sure that it's finished up properly. So we're, we're involved through the whole process.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Have you guys designed civic buildings before?
Yes.
Police station?
Yes.
What, have you done, will you be involved with the demoing of the current station? Is that going to be included in this process?
Yeah, the, generally, we, if we're using the same site, then our documents will show the level of demolition that takes place, and then obviously the contractor swings the hammer.
Since that will be like, build in the parking lot, take it down and make the parking lot?
It, it appears as though there may be some of that going on, yes. But yeah, we, sometimes that is, is not strictly part of our scope, but it appears as though on this project that it probably will be, and it will be included in the documents that will be ultimately priced by contractors.
With or without joint partnerships, how many police stations have you designed?
Have we designed? We have FFA...
If you don't know, it's fine, I bet.
Oh, it's several. Lebanon, Hillsborough, we've done studies on several others in other communities.
Thank you.
Okay.
You answer that question? Yes. Could you get another layer down? I liked your, your picture of the orchestra and the conductor, but could you get a little more specific of how you actually see involving council and staff and, and even the citizens? Maybe with some of your other operations, what you did to involve them?
Well, what we, as we mentioned, we do really, we like to tailor not only the design of the project to each user group and community, but we like to design the process as well for what will work well for your community. So it, it does vary. Typically, we, the design team, are working with a core group from the city that would include certain stakeholders as established by, by the city. Sometimes we have focus groups where we establish certain groups of people or are made aware of certain groups of people we should talk to. And something that we talked about quite a bit in our interview was to identify certain important milestones in the design process where we involve the community in various theaters, I guess, if you will, and public meetings or public presentations, in order to get community input about the project early, before we're too far down the line. And when I say too far, I mean well into design, where things can't still be adjusted, considerations made. I have been doing this for more than thirty years, and I've, I've become a really strong believer that a lot of the best ideas come from anybody. They may not be, we need to interpret them architecturally, but I've, I know that on a number of projects, some really great ideas have come from, from folks in the community. Would you like to expand on that at all? Sure. So you asked relative about numbers of projects, and we do a lot of sort of projects for a lot of different communities. And so right now, even, we're working with Carlton and Lafayette, one in the city hall police station, one in the city hall fire station, and the level of involvement at, for staff and council are different in both of those two scenarios right there. So in Carlton, we're working closely with staff. We have the chief of police, the finance director, the city manager, and the assistant city manager, that's our core group, and we work with them daily, weekly, depending on what is happening in the design process. And then we engage council once we've kind of set direction with staff. The flip side of that is Lafayette, where we work closely with staff, but a lot of our design conversations and thinking is in front of council. And so it's, whatever works best for your organization and how you operate.
I noticed under, you were asked, asked the question about your knowledge level of police facilities, and I heard you say you design for what you do. And I guess what comes to mind is, hopefully, we're designing and building a building for twenty-thirty-plus years. I don't think the chief's going to stay with us that long. So how do you adapt your thinking to, you know, what, not only what he's doing today, what you do, but maybe what somebody else wants to do, or, you know, how the whole policing changes into the future?
Well, I think architecturally, it's always a great idea to have the, the skin and bones of the building be able to allow for internal rearrangements, have the systems be such that the systems that serve the building, have them be in places where things below could maybe move around, and they are not necessarily disturbed or disturbed minimally. Because in a lot of the public facilities that we do, such as city halls and libraries, it's much the same question, because technology and other things are causing things to change faster and faster and faster. How do you design something that's as kind of rock-solid and in place as a, as a building, and make sure that it's a good investment for not only twenty-five or thirty years, but it could be fifty or more? So those, we think of it quite a bit in terms of building systems and allowing for changes. We can't necessarily anticipate right now to occur in the way we set up those basic building systems. I would add into that is that we also are thinking about larger site space, ways to bank space on a site so that your needs can grow out of the building over time. So planning for that logical expansion, so that the building doesn't hit its maximum capacity in thirty years and you have to go find a new facility. So it's always playing a little bit more for the future that way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask?
Please.
Have you done, is there a seismic value thinking for this being the Cascadia Subduction Zone?
Sure.
Will that be part of that process to have it be, I don't even know any of the terms, but will that be taken into consideration?
Yes, the primary term is essential facility. Police facilities, fire, hospitals, those all need to be designed to a higher standard of care, if you will, because they're considered essential to our society. And so that will be baked in to the design of the facility. Thank you. Please.
So ideally, I would suppose that the building should be reflective of the needs of the community, and we are going to have a higher retirement age, maybe, for people, which would be different than you would get in Las Vegas or something. So how, how do you incorporate the communities itself into the building so it is representative of the community that it's in?
Well, I think we work pretty closely with the chief to understand the short-term and long-term needs from a policing standpoint. So in addition to an aging population, you also have a lot of people who come here in the middle of the summer, and that's a different population set. And so working with the chief, we determine what the largest population that you're sort of addressing from that standpoint is, and we accommodate it. And then we build in the flexibility as best we can to accommodate the next shift or the next change that happens over time. But there's also something about representing a community just in the architecture itself. We believe very much in about learning the stories of Lincoln City, because you don't live here, so we work very closely with the community to, to learn what the community is about, and make sure that the architecture itself represents that. The history, the current demographics, whatever it is, we work really hard with the community to find out what's most relevant.
And so you'll involve the community itself?
Yes.
And, and you'll do that in a concerted way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's our goal, and that's what we, we had a good discussion about that with our, the selection team as well. I think the other thing to recognize is that the, the environment here really takes it out on buildings. So in addition to kind of the cultural and demographic aspect of the community, we need to really be mindful of the effects of, you know, being so close to the, to the ocean and the, the unique environmental challenges, and how this building can better withstand so that it really is there for multiple generations. So those are all things that have been on our mind as we've been thinking about this project. Thank you. Ms. Hinton?
I have two more things. One is you said you didn't, you don't live here.
Yep.
How about if you think about that? It's a pretty nice place. You could use an architect or two.
Fair enough.
And secondly, have you seen the pre-design or the conceptual design that the chief's been packing around with him for a few years?
We have.
So are you able to put that out of your mind and start afresh?
Yes.
Thank you.
My question is, how big is the shooting range going to be?
My question is, how big is the shooting range going to be?
Depends on your budget at the end of the day.
I'm with you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Two votes.
At least eight lane.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our citizens for letting us change the agenda. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
We are looking for a motion to allow us to, I don't think it was specifically mentioned in the staff report, but I believe we need your approval to negotiate a contract with this.
How do you want that to be? Mr. Appicello?
As the chief said, just a motion to authorize staff to negotiate the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, a discussion?
Yes, please. Is it often the case that only one presents and that we put that into case? If there was two other companies out of the 30-plus that were interviewed, two were interviewed, but we only see from one, and then it's just a formality that we vote based upon staff's recommendation because we didn't hear from the other two? Yeah, I don't know. Is it to you?
As you described it, that is generally the process, is that you, you have an interviewing panel that interviews and they make a recommendation to the city council. If you're comfortable that, with the interviewing panel's recommendation, then we would entertain that motion. If you're not comfortable, then we would not proceed forward.
The other question that I have, if MWL is also an architectural firm and have designed police buildings in Oregon as well, but we're going to use a local in conjunction with, if the other company could do it, why is there a need to have a local plus a council?
All of the, all of the companies were partnerships. There wasn't a single one of them that was interviewing or that was standing by themselves. They all partnered together with another firm, and this was the partnership that was created that, that made this proposal and this pitch to us.
Anyone else? Any roll call on that?
Before you do, so it is one of our options to vote to hear from the other two architects.
If you want to become the interview panel, yes, you could, you could do that.
Just wanted to make that.
If you want to be the interview panel.
Kevin?
That's not in this motion.
Not on this motion. The motion is to authorize.
Ward.
Spin second, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry?
Ward.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Anton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Seven lane, seven lane.
Now it's seven?
Now we're happy with five.
I'll be happy with five. Seven's where I start.
The mayor wants to hunt chickens there.
All right. Okay, we are at... Thank you. The public hearing, public comment section.
I think we're at resolution.
Oh, we jumped. I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you very much. Resolution 2017-04, resolution of the City of Lincoln City declaring an intent to construct. Do you want to read that?
Well, you don't have to read the resolution, but what the resolution is, is under our LID ordinance, there is a number of steps. And so before you have the public hearing, you have to approve a resolution initiating the LID. So it's basically, this is called the intention resolution. At your last, or actually at a meeting in April, you basically through unanimous consent directed that staff come back expeditiously with this public hearing. You did not approve a resolution at that time. It's called the intention resolution, so that's, so I drafted it to catch you up. So you would approve this first and then conduct the public hearing, and then depending on the results of the public hearing, you have up to 90 days to approve the next resolution, which is the formation resolution. So this is basically the second step. You kind of, could have done it at a prior meeting, but we're getting it done now.
Okay. So, motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-04.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing none. Did I just do an aye? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, and I also skipped over G ordinances, which was none. All right. So now, public hearing, public comment. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I think I'll do the introduction and then turn the heavy lifting over to Mrs. Bradley, Mrs. Reed.
Well, no, I got to read the deal here. It's now 6:57 PM. The public hearing for formation of a sewer improvement district on Northeast 36th Street and West Devil's Lake Road is now open. The public hearing concerns a request for forming a sewer district to extend sewer service. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Hearing none. Challenges, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a counselor to participate in this matter? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to consider this matter? Hearing none. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters, staff report, public comment in favor, public comment opposed, close of the hearing, close of the record, deliberations and decision. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly in the microphone and begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Speakers may have up to three minutes. That's the end of that. Please present the staff report.
As I mentioned, I'll do the introductions and then allow the heavy lifting to be done by Mrs. Bradley, Mrs. Reed. Originally, the proposal that came before you was the hashed section that you see up on the, up on the screen. That was about $120,000 to extend sewer from the red line that you see up at, on the top right to where that hash mark ends. At the, at your last meeting, you had asked the staff to look at the idea of extending it on up Northeast 36th through that area that's light, where the light is. The staff has done that. That increases the cost to about $560,000. The funds that we would have available for this project are the, come from the unfunded bond assessment fund, and there's currently $490,000 in that. So if we were to extend it even farther, we'd have to make up the difference through another, through another fund. The staff has discussed this with all of the property owners that there, that are in that area. Many of them are here tonight and, of course, want to have an opportunity to speak. And so with that, I'll turn that time over to Mrs. Reed and Mrs. Bradley.
Hey, I wanted to mention a few things about the cost estimates. The $560,000 is to, we assumed that the sewer going up 36th Street would need to be at least 10 feet deep, and the reason for that is a lot of the homes, most of the homes are lower than the elevation of the street right now. So we want to avoid, we want to allow most of them, as many as possible, to gravity to that line. So the cost estimate is for a 10-foot deep sewer. Again, allowing for most properties that we can, gravity to 30, to the line in 36th. If they can't, and there will be some who probably still will have to pump, because again, their homes are a lot lower in elevation in the street, and possibly if they're lower than the gravity line, they still have to pump. But they won't be the E1 pumps, they'll be an individual grinder pump that then they, you know, just pump to the gravity line. So the $560,000 is high, it's a high per foot cost, but with, without the survey and without the design, that's, that's the number that, you know, I don't want to make that number less or promise that it's going to be less. So I do want to let people know that we're going to try to allow, to try to accommodate as much gravity service as possible. But again, some will still need to pump. So as, as Mr. Chandler mentioned, the hashed area is the area that we had $120,000 estimate for, and those properties are, there are seven benefited properties. The cost for those would be about $17,000. With the $560,000 line, it could potentially benefit 53 lots, 21 existing, 33, or 20 existing, 33 potential. And this is a number that's very hard to project or guess as what, how many units will actually be put on that property. It's 4.8 acres. So I use the planning number, the planning formula for what is theoretically possible through our planning code. So that's the number we started with, the 33, that's how I got the 33 units on that large parcel. So collectively, if they all participated at $560,000, we'd be talking about $10,500 per dwelling. So anyway, I wanted to make that clear on where we were in the design process and how firm that $560,000 is. And then with that, with Lila, talk about the budget.
As Mr. Chandler mentioned, we have actually $449,748 in our total resources in that additional capital reserve, and we use those for the reimbursement districts, and so that, this entire project would max that number out. And I think we talked about that during one of our workshops as well, that, you know, we only have so much money in this unbonded assessment fund, and so we wouldn't be able to do other projects until it starts paying back. So that's all I had on that.
I wasn't going to add anymore because the report is, you know, pretty detailed, and I know there's a lot of people who want to testify tonight. Do you have any questions before we open that?
I'll go first.
It's your turn.
Okay, I'll go first. Ms. Ward? You know, I remember on the Lake LID, we had people signing letters that said that they, that read that they wanted it. Where in this process does that come in or does it?
The, that's one way to initiate a local improvement district. Council can also initiate it, and that's what that resolution you just passed was about, that council initiated. That this time, this was council initiation. So we did not get 50% of the property owner requesting the sewer extension. But, but this is the time where then you hear from all the property owners.
Okay. How far, I'm not familiar with the property, I'm sorry, besides what I've seen on the maps. Is it, how far is, are those, that land away from a water source? Or completely away, or?
There's some wet, there's, there's some wetland. There's a water course that runs through this property. A little bit. I'm not sure exactly where. We haven't surveyed it. We don't have the exact topography for that lot, but there's, the wetland is a little further north.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Please. Yes, I'm playing Minecraft while the city council.
I thought so.
Just so, for folks who may not have been here before, my mom's in hospice and I've got a lot of things going on, so I apologize, but, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Just thought I'd check. Okay, I have a, as usual, a few questions. I'm just curious, you haven't had this survey, the larger parcel that we're considering adding to the, making that part of the LID. And there is some topography, you just mentioned some wetland, and so, and you also mentioned that it was just a potential number of lots. And so could in fact, the number of lots identified preliminarily now actually be reduced because of the topography and the, and the wetland, and that changes the, how much per each lateral would be? And should we find that out before we? I mean, that's a big question for me, and it must be for the people in the audience. It's too big of an unknown to, for me to consider going forward.
Our survey is for the sewer line, so we wouldn't be surveying private property.
You'll, I think you're going to hear.
Right away, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but that's, that's too big of a question mark. I don't know, I mean, I'm not familiar with that, that parcel of land either, but it looks a little, it's a little bumpy and, and what's the elevation gain, loss? I mean, what, what are we talking about? Really?
Well, again, all I can do right now, we can do right now is look at the planning formula that says, here's what could be allowed on this property. Here's the number of units that would be allowed. This one's even trickier because it's commercial zoned, so we, the Richard Townsend used the single family, as those single families would be put on this. He used it per unit, but if you looked at it from a commercial standpoint, and they did something mixed-use and multifamily on top of that, it could be more than that. Could be more than 33. So that number is a number that we need to agree on before, you know, that's a, that's a very important number for this, for this local improvement district.
Yeah.
And I believe the owner is here tonight, so we've got some input from him on what he thinks he could get on that lot.
Okay, so you did consult with the planning department and?
Oh, yes.
Tried to sort that out. Thank you. And I just, with the sewer 10 feet deep, what type of, what method of construction are you considering?
Well, it'd be a traditional trench, with some shoring for that depth, but nothing unusual.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, the two figures are 19 and 33, correct? 19 units and 33 units? The two different, the two different sets of numbers, the 19, and that would cost the individual $17,000, and the other one is 33, and that would cost $10,500. Are that, is that the four numbers?
Do you mean the number of lots affected by these two?
Correct.
The first, the hashed area that's over on the left is seven lots.
Seven.
Seven.
At 17, 150 per lot.
And then the remaining number of lots is?
53. Oh, well, the remaining then would be?
46.
Yeah.
46. So the question I have is, for the individual that owns that property, we would ask them to cover, you know, 39 times 10,500?
30, 33. Initially, the proposal, as you see it today, is for 33 units on that large parcel.
So yes, that would be 33 times the number?
Yes, yes. So I think it came to 300 and something.
So. Counsel? Thank you. Ms. Appicello?
One of the things you determine during a LID formation is the methodology for coming up with the assessment. Part of that is how you deal with a large, over four-acre parcel. Staff has identified, it's a typo in the code, but it's in the report, but it's in chapter 17, the allowable density calculation performed by the planning department. So staff has relied upon the planning department making the allocation based upon the formula in the code. So when you look at competent substantial evidence to support your decision, you have identified a methodology and followed it consistently. This parcel, I don't know if it's one lot that's four, more than four acres, or more than one lot, but it has one actual lot, and then there's potential lots. So the potential lots can fall under the potential lot deferral, which is set forth, I gave you that code section. So the potential lot deferral allows someone to def- So the potential lot deferral allows someone to defer until the property is sold or development occurs. So I just want you to be aware of that.
But they still need to pay the interest?
They pay interest based on the thirty-three, which is what the methodology, assuming you're using this methodology, would reveal.
Yeah.
Do you know how many of the septic's there are failing?
We only know of one. One person has reported and come to us with a failing septic system. We haven't inspected them.
You, you should have the dates that they were put in.
I don't have those, but I may have-
They're giving idea of their age.
Could do that. Mm-hmm. I, I didn't do that.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Now it's time for, the way we normally go is testimony and support. Let me just back, take here, Mr. Rodriguez. Since we don't have many signed up, if you're for or against, I'll just call you as you're written, so just come on up. State your name and the mic. Feel free to pull it forward if you need to.
Good evening, my name's Jim Rodriguez. I'm, I live on thirty-sixth. We've been struggling with our failing system now for about seven, eight months. We've, luckily, we've had some neighbors that have been very, very accommodating. We go to their house and shower. We go to the laundromat to do laundry. We take five-minute showers at home. In that span of time, we've emptied our septic tank three times now, at three hundred and fifty a pop. So it's been a, it's been a struggle. But we've had, you know, we've done it. We know as, we know as homeowners that when things go bad, you fix them. And we were lucky enough to, to come up with this plan B that the city, you know, or Stephanie has proposed. So we're all for this septic tank, you know, this septic tank, or this new line that's going in. If it was up to me, it'd be done tomorrow, but I know we have to wait. We've waited seven, eight months, but we're all for it. And, and I just hope that everybody else on that street can benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Ron Krieger? No, that was the, the other one. And Monica, no, Monica was the other one, right? So that was it? On my sheet, anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak? Now's the time, folks, come on forward, let us hear from you. Come on up. One at a time, though. Sure. I don't know if we can answer any for you tonight, but we'll listen to you.
Rebecca Stone, and I live on, further up the street. I'm, I'm one of the ones, the newer ones that was included. And my question is the-
Rebecca, I'm sorry, you gotta kind of keep that mic near you. We can't, near you and record it.
My, my question is, the, the property adjacent and back of that whole stering of properties, I just got a notice that it's, it's being made, it's being prepared for sale, and my understanding is for potential development. And I'm wondering why, if, I understand the city's wanting to put everybody eventually on sewer rather than septic. But I'm wondering if that's developed, wouldn't they have to put a sewer line in? And it would be more beneficial, easier, I think, for those properties in the newer area, the street line? Because we're all downhill properties. Instead of having to dig deeper or pump up, we could just run lines down and connect to, to a sewer if it were to go in down there? Because it's all downhill.
Have you had a chance to talk with the city manager about this at all?
We chatted a little, no, no.
Obviously, maybe that would be a good place to start with your questions, and if that's satisfactory, you're on.
And I'm also wondering, yeah, it's a lot of money, and none of our septic tanks are failing except for Jim's. And I'm just wondering, it's going to maybe be a hardship for some people, and what happens if somebody can't afford the connection? I know, I realize that the, the sewer itself is going to be spaced out over twenty years, and probably just added, I guess, to our property taxes, or, I'm not clear on that, or perhaps our water bill, a connect with sewer water bill. So that kind of spaces that out, but the connection to get from the house to the sewer line is pretty pricey, especially if you have to pump it. And so I'm wondering if people are really hard pressed, I mean, if this is mandated, what do they do?
Have you gotten together with your neighbors?
A few, a few.
I would really recommend getting together, deciding what it is you want to say and ask.
Mm-hmm.
And then perhaps get together with Ron and hash this out a little bit further, because this really isn't a time for us to answer your questions about these things.
Okay.
So you get a straighter answer, you can bring in, you know, the department heads, and then, then come back to us if you like.
Okay, yeah, that sounds reasonable. And, you know, also, it seems to me, we're still working on improving the septic tank situation around the lake, aren't we? It seems like to me that would be a more, you know, emergency kind of project than us, with non-leaking septic tanks, septic tanks, except for around the corner, or those who wanted to be down on that end. But it seems like we need to focus on Devil's Lake first. That's my two cents, anyway.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question? Point on the map where you live, so I know where we're talking about.
Where am I? Where am I? I'm, I'm on twenty-seven hundred. I'm kind of in the middle, well, toward the right side.
Are you?
You can poke in the hash market. Yeah, go ahead, walk up there and point, it's fine.
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, you're getting from the audience saying here the other way.
Okay. Because I'm in the lighter color area. So I should talk to you?
Please. Great. I think you find Ron very easy to talk to about these things. Anyone else who did not? Nope, here we go. Who was next? Are you both together? Okay, great. It's not that hard.
We actually are, Caprice Davis and Ron Krieger, we are on your list.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm Ron Krieger.
We did have questions, but I know this is early, so we're just gonna kind of put the questions together in a comment as concerns. Although I do believe this is a good idea to do this, and to get the city completely on a system if you're in the city limits. With this project, I believe that there are too many unknowns. Number one being the development of the large lot, saying that there's thirty-three potential lots in there, when most of, some of that down there is wetlands. The owner was never intended to develop this property in the first place. So to label him with three-quarters or two-thirds of the price of this project on this street, I don't think is reasonable or fair at all. One of the lots that we own, we own two lots on Thirty-Sixth Drive at twenty-eight, forty-five, northeast Thirty-Sixth. One of them is landlocked and can't even, doesn't even have a road or driveway to. So, and we are projected to have two connections in this project as well. Which is a concern, because I don't know that we would ever develop it, and I don't know that it's buildable, actually, at this point. The other concern is the overrun on construction estimate. Where does that money come from? I mean, if we budget for ten thousand dollars, and then all of a sudden, it's, the budget is overrun, as it does happen in construction, who foots that bill?
Well, yeah, I was going over the paper, the-
For microphone for you.
Going, going through this deal, it said it was, with the financing on it, it's ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents over the twenty years. And then there's another deal that's got, for this onsite, fifty-seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Now, is that on top of the ten thousand eight hundred?
To connect to the system.
So that's above and beyond the ten thousand five hundred or ten thousand eight hundred to hook up? It's not stated very well in this, it's kind of shady. But, yeah, I mean, it's like, we were talking about our, our second lot, I don't know that we'll develop it or be able to. I don't know if it's sellable, and I don't, anyway. I, I was concerned that you guys hadn't even talked about to any of the homeowners about this before making this resolution. There was a lot of questions from you guys with each other, that already, we already voted yes on this resolution, and you, for example, Diana, were, had a lot of good questions. It's like, I can't believe you voted yes on the resolution if you had these questions. That's all I got.
Well, thanks for coming forward. And again, I would encourage you to get together soon with the other property owners, and come with a cohesive voice to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Are your lots, are they in the lighter area or the hashed area?
We're at least here.
Okay.
Right. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Now is the time, folks, let us know what you need to say. Okay. Well, then, others including any testimony from representatives of public agencies. Okay, then we have to continue or leave the record open?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You know, I'm very concerned about the Rodriguez's issue with their system. But putting that aside, and the questions, I, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate for Public Works to have a gathering, a neighborhood gathering, specified time, if that hasn't already been done, but to answer some of these questions and, and walk through the grids. Much like you, we just got these numbers this weekend to kind of grind through, and it, it would sure help facilitate the public process. I think if, if the consumer was able to ask their questions as they've done, but get answers, you know, there in a, in a meeting. I, I know it delays our actions, moving this, and, and I'm the one that was banging to get us going, to help the Rodriguez's, but I, I just think there's a lot of questions, and good ones, that could be answered in a group neighborhood meeting. We can certainly do that, be happy to do that. The thing that I would point out, though, is that you're talking about the original proposal that the staff brought before you was just the hashed area. Okay? And so, based on your information, we added the rest of it. And so we'll go ahead and speak some more with the residents, but I just wanted to point out that just going through the hashed area is an option in and of itself. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I would agree. I just, I'm on a push, if we can, inside the city, to do gravity as much as we can, and, and get more undeveloped property available to be developed. I think it's to our benefit if, if we could position it in such a manner, gets to benefit everybody, including the city.
Mr. Mayor? This goes to the question of organizing neighborhoods and providing more interaction between the city and its citizens, and the bigger and broader discussion about how big things should be and where the, where people are willing to go with this. If we could move that in future projects upfront, that I think a lot of the concerns and issues and worry could be alleviated before we get it here. So I would suggest that we add public outreach on sensitive projects such as this, early on the, in the process.
Is, Your Honor?
Please.
Is the council looking to continue the public hearing, or just leave the record open?
Well, if I can, Mr. Mayor, I guess my, it's not clear to me then what kind of action to take on the public hearing, because I think there's plenty more information to be given to us before we make a decision, so, you know, but I'm, I'm looking for help and assistance. I would leave it open so that we can exchange information in order to make a, a decision.
Yeah, as long as we expedite things. Yeah. Okay, so consent to leave the record open?
Well, there's a question of, is, should you want to continue the hearing, or close the hearing and leave the record open?
I'm good closing the hearing, as long as we can take extra input.
Mr. Mayor? I suggest leaving the hearing open, so that after we meet with these good folks, if they want to come back and talk to you, you know, they can talk to you, and not just in written form.
I'm, I'm easy. I want to make this work for everyone, so.
I agree with that.
Okay. So then a motion to continue, or keep the record open, keep the meeting up, or, what did I say?
Keep the hearing open.
Thank you, keep the meeting open.
I move to keep the meeting open.
Continue, continue the public hearing to a date certain.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, please.
I second it.
But we need a date certain.
Okay, may I ask a question to get to that answer?
Yeah, please.
Okay, Mr. Chandler, you might have to confer with Stephanie, but at what point do you think you would be ready for us to hold the hearing again?
That's what I'm just getting ready to ask her.
Okay, I'm reading your mind.
We can get a meeting with these good folks, so that we're ready within two weeks, so we'll put it on for the next meeting.
And I'm going to open up a huge can of worms here. Is there anything we can do to help the Rodriguez's while we deliberate this matter? Starting the construction. But that requires you to finish this process.
So what's, what's the date of the next meeting?
Twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds? So the motion was to continue it to the, make twenty-second date?
It hasn't been said.
Ron, twenty-second, good with you? Yes. Okay, so the motion is to continue to twenty-second, six P.M. here, right? And then, second?
Yeah, second.
Second, okay. Motion's second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And then do we need to, that, that covers leaving the record open? Yeah.
You're, you're done with the script at this point.
Great. I like being done with the script. Oh, where did it go? No go.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask who seconded that motion?
Uh, Councilor Casper.
Thank you.
Sorry, my agenda just slipped away. Okay, public hearing, to receive public comment regarding exemption of the competitive bidding process proposed for Schooner Creek sanitary sewer boring project. It is now seven thirty P.M. The public hearing for exemption, and folks, just in case, if you got any conversations, if you could take them outside, because I hate to tell you, I can hear almost everything you're saying up here. It is now seven thirty P.M. The public hearing for exemption from the competitive bid is now open. This public hearing concerns allowing for exemption from competitive bidding process for the proposed Schooner Creek sanitary boring project as allowed under ORF 279C dot three three five. The council must take a few minutes to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a councilor to participate in this matter? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction- Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to consider this matter? Hearing none. Folks, if I could ask this one more time, if you're going to have a conversation to take it outside, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters, staff report, public comment in favor, public comment opposed, close of the hearing, close of the record, deliberations, and decision. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly in the microphone. Begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Speakers may have up to three minutes. Please present the staff report.
Okay. So, an exemption to the competitive bidding process is being proposed for the Schooner Creek sanitary boring project. This is much like the process we went through for boring our water line and sewer line under Schooner Creek at Highway 101. So what happens is, um, we believe, we have made findings, the staff has made findings, that it's, um, we, we meet the requirements under ORS 279C.335 that allow agencies to not use the design, bid, build model, but rather to go out for a proposal, to make sure that the contractors selected are qualified. In this case, we're proposing to request proposals from qualified contractors. We're going to select them based on qualification, experience, approach to work, and then costs. So again, this is much like the process we went through for the water line under Schooner Creek at Highway 101. I did publish this, and what happens is I announced that the findings are available for people to comment on. I have no requests for the findings, and I have no comments on this request. So I'm asking you to do is to authorize the exemption based on the findings attached and approve staff to use a request for proposal process to bid this project.
Questions of staff?
If you recall, this is the project that by boring under Schooner Creek, all of the sewer lines eventually flow to one pipe that goes to the sewage treatment plant. This, with the boring, we would then be installing a second pipe and thereby alleviating the problems that we've had where we've had to discharge sewer because of the heavy rains.
Okay. Questions of staff?
Just a little one. This is, can you show my ignorance again? It's okay. The size of pipes you were putting in were a 24-inch, right?
We were putting in two 14s.
Right.
Yeah.
Don't they go into a 24-inch pipe?
No, they'll be separate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They'll, 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 they'll replace or be able to offline the 24-inch with the two 14s. So we'll have essentially double capacity from the 24. Yeah.
If I may? Currently, what's the pipe now?
24.
The one pipe that we have?
Mm-hmm.
And by having two 14s going to a 24?
The two 14s will go right to the headworks. So they will not tie into that 24.
The headworks are the sewage treatment plant.
So it's not, the way that it says, it's 240 feet of 24-inch line and connecting the two to the existing system. So that's why I was just...
Yeah, I shouldn't have worded it that way. It's actually going to go all the way to the plant. It's not going to tie.
So that's why I was asking?
Sorry about that. Yes, that was...
Okay. So can we make that, does that need to be changed? Or is that, you know, and now we know that two 14s will not go into one 24-inch?
Right. Our design will clearly take the two 14s to the headworks. So I don't think I need to modify this description. But yeah, that background's a little fuzzy.
So that's, so that's good.
Yeah.
And that will, as Mr. Chandler said, alleviate the discharge at 32nd Street?
It will help. It will help a lot. We'll be taking flows from 48th and Jettie, and those flows will go into one of those 14 inches. So they won't be competing with the flows from Nell Scott, if you will. And that's why we did two 14s instead of just one separate 24. And I believe this is going to make a very big difference and will give us a lot of capacity. It won't be the only fix we need to make to that system, but this is very important and will benefit.
And the current 24-inch pipe will be, what do you call it, camera or TV?
Yes.
To be able to determine whether or not it's still used. And then we will have three inputs to our wastewater treatment plant?
Correct.
And I might add one other thing, that this is kind of part one. If you recall, when we were looking at the sewage bond, part of that money would go for increased repair based upon the infiltration that we see, that we'll find throughout the community. So just as we have gone looking for leaks in the water system, we'll be looking for outflows with the pipes and replacing those as well. So it's really a combination of increasing capacity plus, uh, more intensive looking for repairs that need to be done in the sewer system.
Quick question. So those pipes will handle the big storm, million gallons of water from Topinelli Scott coming in? Am I next up?
Yes, they will be designed to handle the flows from Nell Scott. The trick, and so, as Ron said, the second phase will be to make sure the flows from Nell Scott get all the way to the plant. And that's working on that pressure line from Nell Scott that goes through that 24. So there's still some work to do there. But this will help a lot.
When will all this be done?
Well, we're ready to bid these two 14s when you guys give us, if we, if you get the go-ahead to do that. We're going to, we're ready to put the proposal out. I think we can do it in a few months. We'll begin work.
So we can tell the people in Nell Scott, Dad, we got it handled.
Almost getting the cup deer from the back there, so make sure you...
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Can you remind me again why you would like to use this type of contracting?
Sure. So if you go to your findings, um, we feel that going out for a traditional bid build, you get the contractor you get. You get the low bid. And a lot of them, through our normal due diligence process, are qualified. They can bond, and they say they can bore. We have no choice but to bore them that contract. We've had an experience where we had someone who wasn't able to complete the project. And so we would rather make sure that any proposer on this, any contractor we hire for this project is completely qualified, knows how they're going to do it, explains to us how they're going to do the boring. They give us a not-to-exceed price, and they take the risk. They see what our conditions are. And we've got to get to here-to这儿. Here's what we know. And they essentially design, design it. And that's why 50% of our award is based on their approach to work and their method of construction. So it's just a sure way for us to know that we have a qualified contractor, and he's going to share the risk or take the risk for that boring work.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate it. Okay. Anyone want to testify one way or the other about this? I don't have any sign-ups. Seeing none. Others including any testimony from representatives of public agencies? Seeing none. Continuance or leave the record open?
If I may. I just, before we had the engineer's estimates, and I don't see that in this. I know it said, it said 1 million. That was the only number I saw.
This is not a bid. This is just a bid process.
Process, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I think we've found some, we've found some folks who can do this unusual job. Yeah. Is that it? Okay, anyone else? Please?
So I'd make the motion to close the public hearing and end the record?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. Do I ask you, Mr. Attorney, do you have any comments concerning legal issues raised?
So...
Mr. Mayor, we need to then go ahead and...
Close the record, yeah.
No, we did that. We closed the record. So approve this process. So I'd make the motion to approve this, is it called non-competitive, alternative contract bid process?
I second it.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing none. Do I need a roll call on this one?
I'm spending money.
Just want to get it right.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
I'm sorry.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Okay. Anything else? We good with that? We're done? Yeah, okay. All right, we jumped right through the architect already. City manager, city attorney report.
I have just one item, Mr. Mayor. In my weekly report, I had listed the council priorities based upon our discussions, what we had put up on the wall on the sheets. And I have received an email from Councilor Hinton today, and I wanted to bring this before you, to see if you would like to add this to those. Currently, under the area of parks and outdoor recreation, it lists that as a priority, and then it says, and then, and underneath it, it's, we had established more parks and pocket parks. And Councilor Hinton asked me if I would, if we could add, to add a parks and recreation director as a priority in your council priority list.
Please?
Um, the reason I did that is because we had, my memory, some discussion about that, and we had a lot of support for it. So I just didn't want to forget that.
And if I could just throw in my two cents on that, because I'm not in agreement with it, but I'm in agreement with talking about it further. I just don't think we need another employee. I don't know, I guess the same way. It's always been done. Any, anything else, Mr. Chandler?
So the answer is, you know, I'm not...
I'm sorry, I'm, thank you.
Let me add another vote to that. I'm not in favor of making it a priority. I think, you know, priority, what I've heard is, you know, parks, and, you know, see where that goes.
You know, if it just said parks, I would agree with that, because everything underneath it would, you know, we would get to it. But that isn't what it says. It says parks, and then it has pocket parks, and it has, what, what was the other one?
Establish more parks.
Establish more parks. So it's, to me, it's a little convoluted. So I thought, I want to be clear about what I heard the intention of a number of us during our discussion of that was.
I think it's a good idea to add it.
I think it's viable enough, certainly, that we should pull it out and dissect it and, you know, listen to what's being said.
Objection to that. I just wanted to make my voice heard. Okay, so, is that it?
Well, I'm not sure what I'm doing.
Okay. Give me your question one more time. What are you asking from us?
You had listed as one of the priorities, parks and outdoor recreation. And underneath that, included with that, was establish more parks and pocket parks. And then the question that was asked by Councilor Hinton was adding a parks and recreation director under that, under that heading of parks and, parks and outdoor recreation. Now, I might point out that this has been up, this has been brought up in the budget, and it will be one of the budget discussion items as we go forward. Whether that means anything, I don't, that's just an interesting note. But from, so far from your discussion, I don't know what to do.
I think the consensus was we'll talk about it, but not commit. I just, I don't think it's a priority. That's the word that's hanging me up.
Well, for me, if it's, you know, on the priority list, if that's what we're asking for, we know it can't move forward without budget consent. So, you know, I think by putting it on then your priority list, if that means it's a discussion item, I'm there. Recognize that it's not approval for such a position or anything else, just simply...
Yep, I'm good.
Nothing on that priority list is an approval.
Just, it's good to hear it. Good to hear me say it.
So go ahead.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you.
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Appicello? Nothing. All right, actions, if any, based on work session and executive session meetings. We need to have another executive session scheduled. And I believe we talked about, uh, Wednesday the 17th, 5:30 here, our first conference room.
May I mention something? Also, at that same time as the Parks Board meeting, so they might have to find another room to meet in.
Oh, my.
You are double booked.
I will not be able to attend the executive session. I need to be at the Parks Board meeting.
Perhaps Deborah could be in your stead.
I will be where, I will be wherever you want me to be. However, at their last Parks Board meeting, I told them that I would be there, and I'd hate to renege on that the first meeting after that.
We'll see. If we had a Parks Director, the problem will be solved.
Is this a continuation on, is it my evaluation you're going to have at this?
That too, yeah.
So we're not done with the city manager's valuation?
We have not presented it to him.
Mr. Mayor, the Parks Board meeting, I believe, is at 6, I think it's at 6:30, is it not?
Thank you for reminding me of that, Councilor Hinton.
It's at 5:30?
It's at 5:30. Oh, no, that's...
It's at 5:30?
5:30.
Oh, okay.
Well, then, if you don't mind, just putting your presentation, your revale, up to another day, maybe schedule it following...
Next council meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. Additional comments from citizens present on the non-agenda items? Anyone want to speak? Going, going, gone. Thank you all for attending. Announcements or comments by city council?
Yes.
Please.
One, I would just, I don't know what happened, and I might have missed the sentence, but the disc golf course thing, I would like to be told what happened to that. Had somebody asked me, and I was like, well, I don't know. I don't remember. But I also could, it also could not have been anything. Another thing is, I was told that there had been art purchased for open space, and it has not been installed yet. I also have a question of all, do all the department directors or the directors or the department heads report to the city manager? And if not, who do they report to?
Okay, I can answer those. On the disc golf, we had applied for a grant. We had initially received a tentative approval of that. But upon looking at it closer, the state pulled that approval because they were not satisfied with the temporary nature of a disc golf course. And we have not heard back from the folks that are interested in the golf course in weeks. As pertaining to the art purchased, I'm not aware of any that has been purchased, but it's not installed. In your budget meeting, we are giving you a list of the art, public art that has been purchased and installed. But I will check and see if there is any that has been. And as far as department heads, all department heads report to me. The only three people that don't, that report to you are me, our attorney, and the judge. But all other employees ultimately would report to me. But all other employees ultimately would report to me.
All other departments report directly to you. Do they go through, so say, Parks goes through something else before it gets to you?
Yeah. You have, the departments that you have within the city, the biggest one that you're thinking of is the Public Works Department. Public Works includes the engineering, it includes parks, it includes the vehicle maintenance, it includes streets, it includes water and sewer. All of those are divisions within the department, and so each of those division heads report to Lila Bradley, who is the department head, and she reports to me.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Okay.
I just want to suggest, maybe we could get a flow chart, if you have one?
Sure.
Then we won't keep asking you the same questions over and over. Well, no, I can't commit that. I do have a couple of things. This morning, I had the opportunity of welcoming the Oregon Retired Educators Association to Lincoln City. I, so I hope that our local businesses experienced a surge of retirees shopping in their stores. I beefed up the shopping part. That was a spunky and fun group of about 60 people, and I want to give a shout out to the casino staff, as I received comments about how responsive they were to the association's needs, as they were putting things together for their multi-day conference, so that was pretty, that was nice to hear. And this Wednesday, Councilor Casper and I will be on a panel discussion for the Lincoln Leadership Course through the college, and I'm hoping that will be fun. I have no experience with that, so I'm not sure. And both of these things were picked up because Councilor Walkie is out of town, and I just want to say to her, I don't know if she's watching, but she sure does a lot for this city. It's just amazing how often I trip over, oh, well, she was doing this, or she's coming, it's just really wonderful. And I, my last thing is, I'd like to ask the council if we could ask the planning department for a date of when the roads and rezoning and neighborhood plan will come to council.
I will...
No, because they have to have a hearing at the Planning Commission first, before they come here with, but...
Consider it asked, and we will put together a timeframe.
Thank you.
And I'll work with Mr. Townsend on that.
Thank you.
I'll go follow up, and we have something for us next meeting?
For...
What you can follow up on, you present...
Well, I'll try to send them with my weekly report. I'll try to have it to you by Friday.
Okay. I know it's been on Councilor Hinton's mind, and I was just encouraging her to say, let's say something and get it done, and...
Yeah, I will try to have that to you, both the two questions that I have so far on, in my weekly report, actually, three items in my weekly report.
Anyone else down this end?
Yeah, I've, I've been exploring new departments in our, in our city. One was the geographic information system, which I requested for Mr. Chandler to have a presentation at the appropriate time. And then last week, I met with IT regarding the expansion of the Internet idea for businesses or whatever conclusion we can come with to, to grow new ideas in 2040. And that was a very interesting discussion with Tony and David, and I appreciate that. And I asked them to give us a presentation about what they do in their department, because I found it very interesting. I was totally oblivious to how extensive it is and how it interrelates. And then I also didn't know too much about the city recorder, so I did a little research with city recorders in Florence, Independence, Sandy, and Newport, and I'd like to share this with the councilors, but it was interesting that I learned that the city recorder is actually a direct link between the inhabitants of their community and their government, and it's really a historian for the community, for the entire recorded history of the city. And that's pretty interesting, because we've been here as a city since 1965. And I also discovered a resolution, 2008-22, and I'd like to request that each of us be sent a copy of this, because to me, it was new, and it's about five pages of what a city recorder does. It's actually a very significant person in our administrative staff. In our charter book, it only has two sentences about what a city recorder does. So if we go back to the times of Charlemagne and Old Ages in London and Middle-Eville Time, there's always been a recorder. So it's nice to know that we have a recorder also in our city. I think we need to understand a little more how it works, so that's my request.
What was the resolution number?
Resolution 2008-22.
Thank you.
And I'll pass my report to others along here.
That it? Ken?
You got a tidbit?
Yep.
I don't know if it's just me, anybody else has noticed that this town's kind of perking up a little bit. It's cleaning up, looks better. And we got a new place in Ocean Lake with that great sign, I just happened to see that on the corner of my eye. It's with all the little shops, it's got a wonderful sign comparable to prehistoric.
Sparks.
Yeah. Whatever, whatever that is. But it's going in the right direction, and you get a few more there, and you get that momentum going, and all of a sudden, everybody wants to be there, which is exactly what we want. So here, here to those folks.
There, there's another one called Scout, and that's a, they do, I think they're tied in with the Graphics 101, and they have like outdoor gear and camping stuff, I mean, they have all kinds of Yetis, I don't know, it's got all kinds of good stuff, it looks really cool.
Right behind Jay's?
Yeah, right behind Jay's Fish and Chips, so they're, they're a new place, too. Nice kind of alternative place, too.
Anyone else? All right, just briefly, have Celebrate Recovery tomorrow night at Faith Baptist, I'll be cooking there. You know, anyone who needs a hot meal, maybe a little counseling and support in their addiction and recovery. It starts at 6:00 PM. We do have the Nelscott Gap Discussion, 5:30 to 7:30, that's here, in this room? Yeah? Ron, Kathy, somebody?
I'm sorry.
The Nelscott Gap Discussion is 5:30 here?
Is it in? It's in. Judy knows.
What?
It's in here.
Yes.
Here, 5:30.
Yes. 5:30 to 7:30, Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 10th. Okay, got it. Happy Mother's Day this Sunday, by the way, to everybody. We, on the 15th, we have Economic Development Workshop here, that is 2:30, and then budgets following that at 5:30. I think that's...
Mr. Mayor, the Nelscott Gap meeting that was brought up, that's an interest to probably more than four of us city councilors. Do some kind of steps need to be taken to, in the advent that there's a higher level of councilors interested in attendance?
Well, I'll just take a quick poll, who's, who planned on attending? Is your hand up?
No, I would like to ask a question to this, but no, I will wait.
Okay, so who was planning on attending? One, two, three, four, so there, I can watch it later, I'm good with that, but that leaves us with four. What was your question?
I, is, just so that I'm clear, every time that these things come up, I just hear the League of Oregon Cities say, we can attend whatever we like, every time, as long as we're not huddled up together, appearing to talk about things like that. So the worry of a quorum isn't as strong as a fear as it is. Am I, is that correct, Mr. Appicello?
I think attendance by itself is not going to be a violation. The problem is, and I've said this before, if four of you are in a room, someone will allege that you violated public meetings law. Even if you are talking about hunting and fishing and something that has nothing to do with city business, you'll have the allegation. So in the past, we've advertised that a quorum of the council may be present, just so that, you know, it's covered. Now, we don't want you to discuss city business.
Right.
And if you're just going to attend quietly, that's the best course of action.
Well, bottom line, you know, the citizens would expect that we would be at something like that. And I don't know whether the remedy is, you know, but people can allege anything, and I've certainly learned that over two years here. They know no bounds. But for me, I intend on going on that. If somebody wants to file a complaint, they can file it.
I have a suggestion, if I may.
Please.
Perhaps at the beginning of those public meetings, where there are more of us in attendance, or at some point during the meeting, there are more of us, maybe the staff at that point could recognize that this is a public meeting, and deliberations are not happening with the council or some such language, so it's just out there, it's might, and whoever is curious can, can at least be warned that...
From my perspective, if I may, is, and I agree completely, we do need to be able to attend these meetings. I think where we have to exercise the caution is a grouping of four or more, because the public doesn't know what you're talking about. You are four councilors together in four seats, and you could be talking about anything under the sun, and so I think just as a, as a courtesy to the public to ease that concern, it should be just a, sit here, sit here, sit here, sit here, and then you can... Right. That's all I'm saying, is it's, I, I understand it, and I just think we need to be sensitive to that, that we are not holding a side meeting, and it's our best way to demonstrate it, is just spread out. You had something, Ron?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree with you. I think part of our job is to educate the public, though, so, rather than just acquiescing to, to them and allowing untruthful reports to be made, so clarity is always important. So I bring it up on purpose, so if there's some kind of action we need to take before the meeting, take it, because there's going to be more than four of us there, and, you know, the, the more often we can remind citizens that, no, this isn't illegal, helpful.
And the ethics manual is pretty clear about that, too, that, especially in a small town, if, if there's an event at the cultural center, we can all, we're all free to attend, but they do caution, watch out for getting in the clusters, and that's it, that's all...
So it's on a brighter light, nicer light? If you're hungry on May 18th, spaghetti dinner out at the Bene Breth Camp, it's a fundraiser, so bring your wallets. 6 o'clock dinner, 5 o'clock, if you want to take a tour of the camp. It's a sunny day, guaranteed. Blue lake water. But the fundraiser is to raise funds so that Lincoln City kids, young people, can attend day camp using that Bene Breth Camp's facilities. That includes, you know, the arts and the lake and swimming pool and zip lines, rope climbing, all sorts of stuff. So it's a nice event, good spaghetti, even gluten-free spaghetti and vegetarian. Though meatballs on the side. So you're all invited.
Okay, with that, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. All right. Mics are off.